Good evening, welcome to today's town council meeting in council chambers. Today, Monday, July 25th, 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Councillor Estrada.
President.
Councillor McKenzie.
Present.
Councillor Manna.
Present.
Councillor Steves.
Present.
Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Councillor O'Clair.
Present.
Councillor Carrasco.
Present.
Councillor Clements.
Present.
Councillor DePietro.
He's our monitor.
Councillor Estrada.
Present.
Councillor McKenzie.
Present.
Councillor Manna.
Present.
Councillor Steves.
Present.
Councillor Vecchia.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Just for the record, I've been informed that Mr. DePietro is on his way, so he will be delayed. Thank you. Agenda item number three, A, consider and accept town council reorg meeting minutes, Monday, July 11, 2016. Any discussion? Simple hand vote, all in favor? Agenda item number three, B, consider and accept town council meeting minutes of Monday, July 11, 2016. Any questions, corrections, comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, simple hand vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Both of them do. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports. The list has gone out. The assignments for each councillor has gone out. I believe I will turn it over now to, A, General Government Subcommittee Chair Denise Clements, Councillor Clements, where she will make her announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The General Government Subcommittee will meet tomorrow night, Tuesday, July 26th, at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room. We have three items on the agenda. One is to recommend Mr. Nash for citizens member. We also will be discussing Constable David Covina as a constable, and we will be discussing the Blight Bylaw. So if you have interest in the Blight Bylaw, please come to the General Government Meeting and bring up your concerns and comments and questions, so that we can move forward with that particular piece of material for the council to review at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, B, that is, Councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any meeting schedule, and of course, there's no minutes to read. I just want to encourage people to submit their interest forms to the Town Manager's Office to serve on the Subcommittee. There are openings. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Councillor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also don't have anything scheduled at the moment, and I want to also urge people to submit applications to join the Subcommittee. We do need two people. We had one application. However, I'm not sure if she's actually still doing it, so she also applied for the School Committee, so I haven't set up for meeting yet.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development, Councillor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to parrot that. Also need interest forms for this, and do not have any meetings scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Councillor Vecchia.
No meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item number five, I only have one this evening. It's just to remind the citizens and the public that on August 13th, it's the bicentennial fireworks. It's being sponsored by the Southbridge Rotary Club. It's going to be held at the Southbridge Municipal Airport. The activities begin, I believe, at 5:00 PM. There'll be different vendors, there will be different things going on, and the fireworks show will begin at 9:00 PM at night. So, again, I just want to urge the public to set that date on your calendar, so we can enjoy some fireworks. I'm being told that it's going to be a night to remember. So, that's the only announcement that I have this evening. Moving on to Agenda item number six, Town Manager Announcements. Mr. San Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one announcement as well tonight. I just want to welcome Casey Burlingame to our team. He's going to be the new Assistant Building Commissioner for our town. He's a local inspector from Worcester and does some supervisory work. We interviewed, I believe it was four candidates, and he was heads and shoulders above any of the other candidates that we interviewed. So we're looking forward to having him being part of the team, and he's excited and had a lot of good things to say about him. So he will be joining us on August 8th. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, it's Presentations. We have Mr. Dan Diddy, the Finance Director for the Southbridge Public Schools. He's going to present the Southbridge Administration Technical Plan. Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Diddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Mr. Manager. Good evening. Before I begin my brief presentation, and there is no PowerPoint this evening, I'm the business guy. I talk numbers, dollars and cents. Just a quick introduction about myself. As the Chair noted, I am the new Director of Finance, Human Resources and Operations here in the District. I come to you from the Leamester Public Schools, where I spent the past three-plus years. Prior to that, I was the School Business Administrator for the Auburn Public Schools right up the road here. I started my professional career in school business, finance if you will, excuse me, in Auburn back in 2005. And it's great to be back in southern Worcester County, and I wish I was speaking to you on a cooler night tonight, but it is the summertime. So why am I here? The District is in the process of addressing longstanding technology challenges. Mr. Parent, our new Director of Technology, spoke extensively about the District's needs this past June when he presented to the School Committee. For example, in our three elementary schools, there are few desktop computers. There is but one desktop computer lab, if that, in each of our buildings. And there are no COTS which allow for portability of instruction. District-wide, teachers don't have laptops for lesson planning, meeting notes, entering attendance or grades. Computers are not centrally managed. They are slow and prone to breaking down, and they're not mobile whatsoever. Just as an example, oftentimes, it takes up to 15 minutes to boot a netbook, a laptop, a PC. That's one vignette. If you take that one vignette and multiply it 100-fold, that is a considerable amount of lost instruction time, not only on a given day, but during the academic year. Case in point, I have with me this evening a unit that's currently in a classroom. This was taken from the middle school, high school. It's my understanding that this is about five to six years old. And this does come apart, so don't worry about that. But I will leave this over here, and you're happy to look at it as I pass it around, but what you'll see is that many of the keyboard tops are missing. So one has to ask himself, herself, the question, how can one, either a teacher, but most importantly, a student, do what is asked of them? How can our students be students of the 21st century if they're working with equipment like this? So I'm going to share this to my right, and again, it's the bottom part here that I'd like to share with you, just pass it around. Just bottom part. Thank you. Moving forward, outside groups charged with reviews of the District have noted the technology challenges which Mr. Parent addressed to the School Committee in June. For example, the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, MASBO, wrote in their report, in their draft report that they submitted to the receiver on July 15th, and I quote, "During the course of the site visit, it was apparent that IT capacity, infrastructure and organization were not adequate to support effective administration, operation, and, most importantly, instruction." End quote. I could provide numerous other examples, but I know that you want to get out of here this evening by midnight on a very hot evening. I think you get the point. I hope you get the point. The District initiated, intended to initiate a lease purchase program with Lenovo Financial Services this past June of 2016. However, as the District began to close the fiscal year and made final projections, this action plan was negated because it was believed that the funds were not there in the operating budget to support the initial payments for such a lease program. FY '16 ended on June 30, 2016. Fiscal Year '17 began on July 1, 2016, and yours truly shows up from Leamester. As I continued the work of closing the fiscal year, I identified funds that could have been used to initiate such a program. There were a number of encumbrances, both in payroll and in the salary budget and in the expense budget, that I either liquidated or reduced. And in doing both actions, dollars fell to the bottom line. Unofficially, and as I presented to the School Committee last Tuesday evening, there's still some work to be done with the Town Accountant upon her return from vacation, but unofficial numbers, there's approximately $204,000 and change that is sitting in the available budget for the FY '16 budget. And again, there's still other activity. Example, we're looking to process some journal entries, and that number may increase slightly. A value of those journal entries, approximately $36,000 and change. So together, there may be approximately $240,000 and change. Again, still to fine-tune some numbers, but I'm pretty confident of the $204,000 and change left over from the fiscal year that ended on June 30. Unfortunately, it was too late to initiate any activity with Lenovo Financial Services. The deadline for wrapping up the FY '16 business had come and passed. I am here this evening to request your support that once free cash is certified next fall, October, November, thereabouts, by the Department of Revenue, that as the Town Manager and the Town Accountant prepare, bring forward to you recommendations as to how free cash can be allocated late next fall, that you will consider allocating back to the School Department a value of approximately $145,000 and change. $145,000 and change. 145,488. $145,488.
I have a question. Did you say there was $204,000 sitting available in the new budget?
Yes. So when we close the fiscal, when the town...
Yeah, hold on. Mr. San Angelo.
So let me kind, I'm going to kind of rephrase it, because he explained it very, very well, but more in technical terms than I'm going to explain it, okay?
I apologize.
No, no, it was very good, but I'm going to explain it just a little bit differently. So the state receiver, Jessica, a few months ago, came to talk to me, and she believed that there was going to be leftover money in their last year's budget that wasn't going to be spent, a little over $200,000, Apple, okay? From last year's budget. Now, keep in mind, the budget year is closed, so that money's coming to the town now, at the end of the year sweep, okay? Which will eventually end up in free cash when it's certified in the fall. So she had told me before the budget year came to an end, that she wanted to buy Chromebooks for the kids in the schools, because their current computers look like this. And I hadn't seen this computer at that time, so I said, Jessica, it sounds like a good idea to take every bit of money they could find to buy these computers for the kids. As you know, there was a transition between business managers. Our old business manager was there, closing the books, and our new business manager was just coming in. The old business manager didn't get it done, because he wasn't sure that there was going to be $200,000 left in the budget, okay? So what happened is Jessica, John Parent, the IT Director, never got the purchase order in time for last year's budget to spend the money. So what happened then is the money, of course, once you end at July 1st or June 30th, you can't spend the money anymore, and it goes in, eventually will end up in free cash. Go ahead.
My question is, you're stating $145,000 now, but it was $204,000.
Yeah, but the $240,000 is going to come back to our free cash. What, 204, and it may be a little bit more than that, but around 204 is coming back to free cash. What they're saying is, yeah, the town's going to get 204, but come time in the fall when we get free cash, they're asking us, hey, will you give us back $145,000 of that, so we can pay a lease payment to get new Chromebooks, okay? So that's what they're asking us, and we can't promise them yet, but I met with Jessica, I met with Dan, and I met with Mr. Parent, the IT Director, and I told them I would like them to come now to this meeting to prepare the Board and explain to the Board what they want to do and how this was just a mistake. They should, they could have did it if they spent the money when they should have. But now the money's going to come back to the town, they can't spend it. They want, they're kind of setting you up to say, hey, when the free cash comes, give it some of us back. It was a mistake, okay?
My question is, that laptop that you just showed us?
Yep.
They all like that?
No. So I got to be honest with you, when Jessica and John and Dan showed it to me, I was pretty skeptical. I said, hey, you can't be giving this out to the kids. I had a hard time believing it. So about two days after, I called up John Parent and said, John, I want to come over to the school system, I want to see these laptops. Because if I had saw this, I think I would have threw it at the teacher, then the principal, and then the superintendent, because it's just ridiculous. And frankly, I was angry when they explained this to me, and I found it hard to believe. So I called up John Parent and said, John, I want to meet you over at the high school in 10 minutes, because these are over at the high school, and they have probably four or five carts with these in it. So I started looking through every single one of them, and about, the truth is, about 20 to 25% of them are like this, okay? The rest of them are not this bad, but they're missing one button, two buttons. There's some that aren't too bad, but they're five years old, Apple. A laptop, for me or you, we're lucky, we get three years out of a laptop, and we take care of them by ourselves. These go through tons of students every day. They're outdated, they're old, and it's crazy. So what they do is there's a monitor that attaches to this, they take a keyboard and attach it to this, so the kid will have this, the monitor, and then they have another keyboard they attach to it, so they can use it. It's unreal what's going on. So what they're trying to do is set up a three-year lease period to buy new Chromebooks for the kids, and not just the high, this is the monitor, it's kind of like this, it's like a docking station. So what they're looking to do is a three-year lease to buy Chromebooks for the kids, not just at the high school, middle school, but also going to the grammar school. And the whole program is about $400,000, just a little over $400,000. So they want to do it over a three-year period of time at about $145,000 each year for three years. What will be in the contract, because we can't appropriate money if we don't know we have it for sure, that every year it can be canceled, so it can only be, you know, if they have to, they got to give them back early. They have no intention of doing that, but what happens if we didn't have free cash for some reason? And we couldn't give them the money? I can't commit the town to a contract if we have no appropriation. Go ahead.
My question is, you said three years.
Yep.
So some people are going to be without good computers for three years.
No, 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 no. You get all the computers the first year. All the computers you get right away, and it's a three-year lease, but you pay it for over three years. If you, at the end of the first year, if you have no appropriation for the second year, you have to give them all back.
Okay.
That's how it works. So I don't want to, I said to them, I don't want to sign the purchase order for this without letting the council, one, know what we're doing, two, let you know that if, for them to do it, we have to have some consideration, and we're not asking for a vote, but that you guys think this is generally okay, so we can get these new computers on a three-year lease contract. This is one of Jessica's biggest priorities, and frankly, this would be huge in terms of improving technology in the school system. So I'm going, I could tell you right now, unless free cash is horrible next year, or there's some other big problem, I'm going to be recommending to support this out of free cash in the fall. I can't make an absolute promise, because I don't know what free cash even looks like yet. So, you know, I just want you guys to understand the problem, why they're doing it the way they're doing it. It makes 100% sense. Computers are outdated, they're useless, and you've got to do something right by the kids. So I wanted you to understand that. That was the whole point of tonight.
I'll say, Councillor Vecchia.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a growing list. Councillor DePietro.
Through the Chair, I'm just wondering, in all respect to us, and I'd love, love to whatever we can for the school system, especially with the new technology of computers and all of that. I have children, I know they're all about it, but I'm wondering why this hasn't gone through the school board, and we have a nice neat presentation, when it is for computers, this for this, this for this, and that's what we vote on, from my understanding, and I am a freshman councillor, but is this something that's really in our purview to discuss, or should it be coming to us through...
So this is really informational, because we're not voting tonight.
I'm all about it, but...
But we will be voting on in the fall. The reason I asked them to bring it now is because they're turning back a couple hundred thousand dollars to the town now, because they wanted to buy these, but they did it too late. So I just wanted you to be aware that this couple hundred grand shouldn't be coming back to us, they would have rather paid for a lease for this, but because of timing, it was a mistake. So I guess what I'm asking is, because of that mistake, to be more reasonable in the fall, knowing that the money didn't fall, 200 grand of that, is because they didn't spend the money this year. That's why I'm kind of setting it up. But you're not being asked to vote, we're just kind of explaining to you what we're going to be doing. If, if in the fall, you guys don't vote for it, there's a possibility that we would have to cancel the lease after one year.
This is the future, I mean, this is a school now. No qualms about it.
Okay. All set, councillor? All right. Are you done?
I am.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two quick questions, obviously, just to follow, first of all, on what Councillor DePietro just said. Eventually, when they, I'm sure they will provide a more detailed plan, and that'll end up going through EHS at some point.
He can tell you the lease amounts right now. He's got the lease amounts right here, so that number he can give you right now.
But I was going to ask, actually, I don't know if this will go to Dan or to you, but I was wondering if you had looked at the idea of purchasing versus leasing, and why you decided to lease?
I'm sorry, purchasing across...
I was wondering if you were looking at purchasing versus leasing, and why you decided to lease.
Let me rephrase. He's asking why they are deciding to lease the Chromebooks instead of purchasing them.
Right. Through the Chair, again, this predates me coming in, but what I can share with you is the following, in a quick vignette, and if you can't hear me, I apologize. It's rare that people can't hear me. There was a news story last night on Channel 4 News about the changing nature of technology. Believe it or not, VCRs that we grew up with or we worked with, you know, years ago, they're not extinct. And the reason for that is just the price of modern technology. By purchasing Chromebooks, the District has the ability, three years down the road, to upgrade to the next step in technology, if you will, or to continue via ownership with a $1 buyout, given the fact that perhaps technology hasn't changed all that much. Secondly, it's also a funding issue. At the end of fiscal year 2016, as the Manager noted, the District did not have available an outright purchase price, approximately $397,000 and change. To buy these outright would be just under the $400,000. Okay. $400,000 buyout rate. Okay, I still have a growing list here. Councillor Clements.
So I appreciate you coming out and giving us this information. I, like councillor Steves, are a little bit concerned that this didn't come to EHS, so that we could ask a lot of these questions, and you would be more prepared for any questions instead of having to answer on the fly. I realize you have documentation and information in front of you, but it certainly would have been good to discuss this, and hopefully, we still will, so that other councillor concerns, we can think about this, and we had no backup information in our packet, so we didn't have any data, we didn't have anything that you're sitting with lease pricing or anything for us to actually review and to think about. I realize we're not taking a vote this evening, however, it just would have been, I think it's somewhat premature to say, this is what we're going to do, but we haven't even had time to digest it. All for the kids, all for education, and for recommendations that we need. That's why we're in receivership, that's why we're doing what we're doing. However, we need to make an appropriate vote and judgment call for the community and the taxpayers' money. And while the money might be coming back to free cash, it still requires us to decide that it's going back to the school. It's a shame that the previous information wasn't there, so we could have made a logical decision prior to the budget changing, and, you know, all the reasons for you being here tonight. I just think the process, we have a good process in place here in the way we do things, in terms of going to Subcommittee, so that we can really vet something like this very well, and ask a lot of questions, and you can be prepared with any answers that you need to be when it comes to the public, so that the public doesn't get misinformation at this point. It's better to come prepared with the information. I know you have it, but we don't, so we're sitting up here asking all these questions that we might, we could still ask them, even though we know the answers, just to let the public know the accurate information, that's all. So I think it's a great thing, it's just, we need more, we need to have, to make an intelligent decision for this community and the taxpayers' money.
If I may, through the Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe I have the numbers either in front of me or in my head, and certainly, I apologize if there was a step in the process of going before Subcommittee and that didn't happen. Certainly, be happy to present to Subcommittee at a point, I assume, early fall, and discuss at greater length. And if I may, Mr. Chair, just one more point of clarity, and can you hear me okay?
A little bit louder is good.
Okay, not a problem. Let's speak a little bit louder. As we go forward in FY '17, and as I presented to School Committee last Tuesday evening, I direct you to the District's webpage. I direct you to the Business Office section of the webpage, and in that section, you will see a FY '17 financial calendar, which speaks to various deadlines, expectations that I will be holding the leadership team and myself, and myself accountable for, so that we don't find ourselves in the same predicament come next May or next June. And that burden, that challenge is now on me. So I invite you, again, to review that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And in that financial calendar, you're also going to see, though it's not comprehensive yet, the kickoff dates for the fiscal '18 budget process as well, which is in early November 2016. Thank you.
If I could answer your question, please. Just, you know, Councillor Clements, a couple reasons it didn't happen the way that you're talking about. First and foremost is, had they not switched over to business managers, they could have just done this without council, because it was part of their, they could have used the money from their last year's budget, so it wouldn't come in here. And you're absolutely 100% correct. If we were going to be voting on it, it would go through the Subcommittee process and up. And truthfully, it's still going to do that at the time of the appropriation. The reason I wanted them to come and just kind of give us a heads-up is because I didn't want them to come to the Subcommittee down the road when we're allocating free cash and say, hey, we already spent the money, but now we want you to approve it, so to speak. So I wanted them to tell you about the plan upfront, because they're going to spend, and they're going to enter shortly into a lease agreement, and they're going to use current 2017 budget funds. What they're essentially asking to you is in the fall to reimburse that expense that they're going to be spending. But they'll have to go through the Committee process, you'll have to approve that reimbursement, so to speak, and if you still have the power not to do that, if you choose, it then means they have to use the 2017 money they spent, they're going to have to reallocate to figure out some way to pay that deal. So that's the problem, that's why I asked them to come early, to kind of give you some upfront notice, not to all of a sudden, when it comes to Subcommittee, say, oh, I already spent 140 grand, you know, I'm sorry, can you reimbursement? Can you do a reimbursement? That's why it's done this way. It was actually to help you.
I understand that. However, what you're now asking us is to do exactly what I was alluding to. You're putting us in a rock and a hard place to say no, if that were the case to be, after consideration, and I don't like that.
The people, frankly, in a rock and a hard place is... The people, frankly, in a rock and a hard place is them, because when it comes to fall, you can say no, and now they're, they're going to be struggling to figure out how to do that.
Let's be reasonable, we're not going to argue the point.
Yeah, I'm just trying to explain to you.
My other question would be, so if this is a lease for three years, how do you plan to fit in the other 145,000 for the next payment? Or whatever you need.
Through the chair, so what we would need to do is build that number into our operating budget for FY '18, and also for FY '19. What I would also recommend as well, as we begin, as we proceed with that budgeting process, that we would also consider other revolving funds as a means, and please don't hold me to this, I'm just talking off the cuff here, but thinking a couple of years down the road, in addition to using the operating budget, other options could be school choice. School choice funds, as you know, are for instructional purposes, that benefit the students. And given the fact that a number of our special needs students would benefit from this new technology, we would certainly have the option, if necessary, to use circuit breaker funds to assist and support this endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I still have a growing list here. Counselor McKenzie?
Yes, this is through you, sir, to our town manager. You used the word contract.
It's a three-year lease agreement.
Okay, it's a lease agreement, not a contract. Is that correct? All right, because a contract could bind us.
Well, that's why I said, in the contract, will be, at the end of the first year, they'll have an option to get out of the contract and give the computers back, because there won't be, because there's no fixed appropriations for the second, third year.
Okay. And my second and final question on this is, with these computers for three years, or two years, or one year, each year, is there a service agreement tied in with this?
And that's a better question with John or I don't know if Dan, if you know the answer. Usually when you buy them, you get warranties that come with the systems, and then you could buy extended service contracts. I don't know if that's factored into the lease.
Through the chair, there is a one-year full warranty on all the equipment for years two and three. There are various options for service programs. It's just a question of which option we chose to look at. Obviously, if we went down that road, there would be an additional cost incurred, and I do have those numbers. But given what we're looking to do with the equipment, we have factored that in, and at this point, unofficially, we're looking to roll with the one-year warranty, and then proceed in years two and three without that. But to be determined the next day or two, at the latest.
And there would be a cost, additional cost figured in, and it would be revealed to us for the second and the third year, and it would be clear on the agreement. Is that correct?
Through, yes, through the chair. Actually, I'll share that with the town manager once we finalize the paperwork, and I would show that with him.
See, the reason this is important, that provision is in that lease, to be able to get out of that first year, is because you legally cannot enter into a contract without an appropriation for those next two years legally.
Okay.
So that's why the contract has that out provision after each year. So we would have those numbers for you for what the cost of the lease was, plus whatever extended warranty they chose to purchase.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, I can just share some numbers with you this evening. Just, the, if we just went forward with the three-year lease, where we had the one-year warranty and all the equipment, and we're looking at a monthly lease payment, the monthly lease payment would be approximately $12,123 per month.
Would you repeat that, please?
$12,123.
One month?
Twelve, one, two, three.
What's that annual total? Do you have it for me?
It's 145,488. Then there are two other warranty programs that I'm looking at. One is called a depot warranty, and a second is called an ADP warranty. And obviously, with each warranty program, the monthly lease payment does increase, as you can imagine. And I'll just give you one example. So I just share with you a figure of $12,123 under the, what's called the ADP warranty program. That would, the monthly payment would increase to $13,433, annualized, approximately 161,000 and change. So I think you can see that whichever program we go forward with, there would be an additional cost incurred.
Thank you. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. Didi, for coming up and presenting this to us tonight. I do agree, I would have liked to have seen a little bit more information. We didn't have any information in our packet besides the agenda item. I'm not blaming anyone, but maybe next time, if it's put on the agenda, we could have, or something like this is presented to us, we could have something in front of us, in case we do have questions. Also, I do remember, it was the last couple budget meetings that we had with the school and EHS and stuff, the Chromebooks had come up, and there wasn't enough money. It's a shame, because we built that beautiful high school, top-notch, we knew where the technology was going, but yet, for some reason, the ball was dropped on that. I guess we could blame it on the inconsistency of the leadership we had up there at the school. I mean, when we have seven financial planners... Let me talk, please. Thank you. I mean, I do blame some of that, on that. I mean, seven superintendents, the financial directors that we went through, it was inconsistency across the board. Many things were dropped. So I do look forward to seeing more information on this. I do believe the children of our community deserve to have top-notch education, just like any other community. And like I said, again, it's a shame, because we have that brand-new, beautiful high school, and this was dropped for some reason. So, thank you.
If I may, I just want to just make a statement. Again, I think this has really nothing to do with the building. I think this has to do with each individual student, trying to give them the technology so they can proceed. So my question would be, how many are we going to purchase?
Through the chair, 1,300 units.
1,300.
1,300, 1,300.
Thank you.
And also with that, our related licenses as well, and with that, our related COTS, which will allow the units to be stored and to be portable. I think I spoke about that in my earlier comments, about the inability to move equipment around, because there weren't any COTS to store them in, or there were few and five between.
Thank you, Mr. Didi.
Can I give just one more point to that conversation?
Just to be clear, because I don't, I don't think we should hang it out there. Five years ago, these probably were state-of-the-art when the school was built. It's just, it's five years later. These were probably the Chromebooks of that day, so to speak. So at the time the school was built, these were fine. It's just that now, technology changes so fast, that these are no longer relevant, and they're old and beat up. But I don't think it was really anything to do with the old high school, because these were, at that time, probably pretty high quality.
Counselor O'Clare?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The list was so long, I think that my answer, or my question was pretty much answered. I just wanted to make sure that, since we've, since the town manager really has gone through all of this effort of using free cash for one-time capital expenses, that the school department would then, going forward, build it into their budget, so.
And that's exactly the intention of free cash. That's why, like I said, if they could have purchased this last year, they would have, but the mistake happened.
Right.
So this is a, the new Chromebooks would be a perfectly legitimate use for free cash in the fall, because it's a one-time purchase, although it's a three-year contract, it's kind of a one-time deal, it's not something, again, in three years, in theory, it's gone. Now, they're talking about building it into their budget, because they want to keep changing technology at the end of three years, and have a continuous source of funds for it. So that's why he's talking about building it into their next two-year budgets.
Thank you.
All set? Thank you. Counselor DePietro?
Through the chair, I think it's tremendous that you're being preemptive with this, Mr. Didi, and I think it's big for all the council, when we're all about the high school, all about the kids. But I think the chair would recognize the fact that this is not our purview, this is not our, I mean, great discussion, but that's not what we do here, as defined, from what I understand. I mean, from the school committee, we would get a recommendation, and certainly with you on board with them, for a vote on these different items. I don't understand, do we get that nitty-gritty, Counselor? And again, I'm just joining this group.
Yeah, we will vote. Due to the fact that we are in receivership, the school administration is making the recommendation, the school committee no longer makes those recommendations, and that's why Mr. Didi is here on behalf of the receiver, Jessica, to make this presentation, and to kind of just give us the heads up. This is, this is just a presentation, this is not an official agenda item, this was a presentation to give a heads up, hey, we discovered an error in our finances, because in the past, we've, a lot of the council has made comments and made very strong suggestions and made accusations in regards transparency, so they discovered this extra $204,000 that will be coming back to the town. And they wanted to just give us a heads up, yes, this was discovered, but we still have this need, and this is the plan that we want to do moving forward. So therefore, this is why the receiver and the administration team brought this forward, and that's why I allowed this on the agenda, because this is just clearly transparency. This is letting us know, hey, $204,000, maybe more, is coming back to you. But we just want to present to you also a need that's before you, before us. So due to the fact that the school committee, we're in state receivership, the school committee has no power anymore to recommend. So it would be the state and the administrative team that will be coming to us to recommend, due to the fact that this is coming out of free cash, this is our purview, so we will be voting on it. And I will make sure this, at the time comes, it will go through EHS, we will have all the financial documents, because we understand, things may change when the contract and the purchase order is getting ready to sign. Maybe it's the company, maybe it's the school, maybe there's an adjustment, maybe they want to order an extra 100 computers, or maybe they want to order less computers. So there's numbers that will be changed. These are the numbers that Mr. Didi has brought to us today. Again, these are all unofficial numbers, and I, Mr. Didi, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for being transparent with the finances of the school, and putting it up on the website, so people can just look and see that for themselves. This is, this is a huge step in the right direction, and I thank you for joining us and doing this correctly. Because again, we need to continue to build the momentum, to push our school district forward, and to push our town forward. So therefore, again, I don't want the council to feel that, you know, I blindsided you by putting this on the agenda. Rather, what I wanted to do was give you a heads up, and let you know, this money was discovered, number one, because if we would have discovered this before, the complaint would have been, why weren't we told this sooner? So again, the sooner I find out about things, the sooner this council is going to find out information. We're going to do this transparent, and I'm going to let you guys know immediately how we're going to go forward. So this will go through EHS when the time comes. Again, I just wanted to give the council a heads up, that, you know, the school has a plan moving forward with technology, and it's not really about building. It's not about the buildings and the servers and stuff, because we dealt with that a couple of years ago. This is more about the one-on-one instruction with the kids. At first, I was telling Counselor Clements, that I was under the impression that they were going to purchase about 600 of them. And thank God that I asked, because they're buying almost enough computers for the whole district. 1,300 is going to cover almost the whole district. So this is exciting, that, you know, our kids are going to be equipped properly to be able to be educated properly. But I still have a growing list. I got Counselor Vecia.
Could I respond, Mr. Chair?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry.
Tremendous, kudos.
Thank you. Counselor Vecia?
You know, this fascinates me, that they found $204,000. Where did the money come from, the 204,000? What accounts is this money coming out of? That you didn't spend the money out of certain accounts, right?
Through the chair, if I may, again, the balance of this is from the salary accounts, and also in the expense budget. This is all prior to the close of the fiscal year, where purchase orders are incumbent...
You're talking to an accountant, okay? I want to know, the $204,000, okay, some accounts, you didn't have to use all the money in certain accounts.
He told you payroll and certain expense accounts, that as they were closing the year, those numbers, they didn't use those, they didn't make purchase orders that they perceived to have them. A lot of them were salary items.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I may have quick questions. How does this actually, how does this particular purchase tie into the school district's long-term tech plan?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Parent, and I apologize.
I can help a little.
Help me a little bit, thank you.
If you like. So there's a couple of different tracks that they're on, right? So the first thing, the first thing that Mr. Parent did when he came in is review the entire technology, current equipment, right? So they have, for instance, their data center is in their high school, so they reviewed all the equipment at the data center, they looked at all the servers that are in the individual schools. So he's building a capital plan for long-term, what the replacement of all those capital items are. Some of that is hardware that just runs the day-to-day operations, it's not an educational component so much.
Sure.
And they're also looking at the educational component, not only the hardware, which we're talking about these, but the software side as well. What new software is? So his, keep in mind, he's only been here a few months, but his plan is to develop, like we did with the facilities management plan, a whole capital plan for what the needs of the future are. He also has recognized that the last IT manager kind of overbuilt some systems in schools, so we have some, too much equipment in some schools, too many servers, so he's also looking to see how he can consolidate the current infrastructure, which means all the equipments, to make it more practical and more reasonable, and not have over, too much room on servers, you know what I mean?
Right.
By putting them together, you know, you utilize all the space on the server, versus having five servers and all of them not being used.
So do you figure that we'll actually have a concrete tech plan by the time this is ready to come to us?
Well, he's working on it, so I would think he's going to have something, because that was his first goal, is to, the first thing he had to do is find out what he had before he gave him to think about what he needs.
Sure, absolutely.
So I know what he's doing, and I don't know where in that project he is. It's possible within four months that he could be in pretty good position, at least give us a reasonably good plan for how he's moving forward.
And through the chair, and thank you, Mr. Manager, I appreciate that very much. But also through the chair, again, I mentioned the Masbo audit, or the Masbo review earlier. Again, in the draft review, all 85 pages, they also speak about a technology plan that needs to be brought up to speed, and I know that Jonathan is very much on board with that as well. So as Robert Frost said, miles to go before we sleep, and miles to go before we sleep.
Thank you. Counselor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From my opinion, it's a good deal. One question, Mr. Angelo, one more time, please. Who the world the guarantee?
Who what?
Who the world the guarantee?
Guarantee.
Guarantee.
Oh, guarantee?
Yeah.
With the original equipment, it's usually a one-year guarantee. But what you do is you buy what's like called a maintenance agreement. So you can extend that warranty from one, two, to three years out, and that provides not only warranty for the equipment sometimes, there's also the warranty, sometimes also troubleshoots the software that's on the equipment as well.
All right. Thank you. Give it to the chairman.
Counselor Clements?
Okay, I just want to be really sure on the numbers. So you put out a number of 145,488. That's per year for three years?
Through the chair, yes, assuming that we don't, yes, assuming that we don't pursue one of the warranty programs that I spoke about earlier.
Okay. Do you have a number, that you're, a total number that you're looking at? Obviously, I just said that, you said the warranties. If you pursue warranties, you have a number.
So again, the lease purchase, lest any of the warranties, is just under $400,000 for three years. 397,000.
Right.
I did have it here in front of me, I apologize.
That's okay, it's close enough.
It was 397,000 and change.
Okay.
Obviously, with the warranties, that number is going to increase. And I did share those numbers with you earlier in my presentation.
Well, we've had a lot of, and I wasn't quite sure...
This is the.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I apologize, through the Chair, $397,425, 397, 425, lease purchase without the extended warranty programs.
And that's what, 1,300 computers?
1,300 units.
Right.
Including COTS and the licenses, et cetera. Yes.
So they come loaded software-wise also?
Excuse me?
They come with the licenses, so the software situation is under control, for what you need?
I think it's a Google, a Google package is what John called it?
Yes.
It's a Google package, it's supposed to be very advanced and very quick. So it's supposed to be really good software. I've never had a Chromebook, so I don't know what it looks like, but I've heard really good things about them. And a lot of school systems throughout the state are moving in that direction, Denise, but I can't tell you what's on there for software. I just know it's very interconnected with other things.
Through the Chair, one of the reasons why.
I was just looking at per student price, that's what I was going for.
Through the Chair, and to the Manager's point, one of the reasons why we're looking at Google and the cloud, if you will, is that it offers the districts, all districts, the opportunity for tremendous storage, if you will. Instead of having a thousand filing cabinets, you can have one filing cabinet with a gazillion files in it, given the ability of the cloud, to bring it down to layman's terms, if I may.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on this matter? Counselor Vecia.
I know where you're coming from, okay? And what I like about you is that, since I've been on the council, you know what you have to do, okay? You know your stuff. You are very well qualified for the job, and I hope we get to keep you these next three or four years, okay? So I'm willing to play ball with you, just so you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor, appreciate that.
Again, I want to thank you, Mr. Dede, for coming and being under the spotlight for such a long time and answering these questions. Again, to the council, we'll see you again in probably early.
In the fall.
In the fall, early September, October, to discuss the final numbers and see this come to fruition, because I really believe this is a great program, moving our district forward. Again, thank you for your time and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very much, I appreciate it. Members of the council, thank you as well, and Mr. Manager also, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council? Please state your name, address. You will have five minutes, and please, keep it respectful.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Rick Nash, 50, Denison Crossroad, Southbridge. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick things on my mind tonight. First of all, I was in attendance two weeks ago during the reorganization meeting. I appreciate the action of the Chair to rescind the secret ballot vote that was taken. I objected to that from the audience, and I apologize if my outburst was recognized. More importantly, though, I appreciate the fact that there could have been open meeting law violation, and along with that, I wanted to let you know that a few of you counselors that I've reached out to have been very open to conversation with me. I'm still bothered by the fact that our counselors took a secret vote, when all I really ask of anybody who represents me is to show the same respect and transparency that we talk about. I'm not going to elaborate on that tonight, I'd be happy to chat at length with any other individual of the seven counselors that voted affirmative on that. The other thing on my mind tonight is relatively a simple matter. Through the Chair, I'd like to ask if the Town Manager can please speculate on who's responsible for securing and procuring inspection stickers for the vehicles that are owned and operated by the town. There's one in the parking lot that I've brought to the Town Manager's attention several times.
Hey, we did do it, did we?
That expired in April. Please?
I think he's talking about the vehicle I drive.
Yes, sir.
For the record, he's right, I think it's DPW who does it, the vehicles I'll do. But frankly, you asked me about it, and I forgot all about it, so I'll have to check. But you're right, the vehicles have to be, you know, the new stickers for each year. I'll have to check with Heather tomorrow, but I suspect it's probably Heather.
Sure, great, thank you, I appreciate that.
And I apologize, I frankly just forgot all about it as we talked.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that, and my concern is obviously taxpayers first. I know what the fines are, because I seem to neglect that myself every year or two.
Fair comment.
Right on. One other thing, just really briefly, it's very refreshing to see a full sitting council, a lot of folks who are very committed to the town, and despite a negative comment or two that I might have made here in the last 60 or 90 seconds, I appreciate the commitment that you all are going to show and continue to take this town forward. I know that we have a lot of things at stake, a lot of good things in progress, and I wish you all the best, and I hope that I can throw my two cents in, as I have tried to do time and again, and I have a lot of faith in you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council? Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Accept the Warrant for the State Primary Election on Thursday, September 8, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
Yes.
Counselor DePietro.
Yes.
Counselor Estrada.
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor Vecia.
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item 10, Counselors Forum, and I will start with Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you. I have two items. First item is the fact that I have checked the open meeting bylaws, and I have found out that I am in remis, that I made a mistake, and so I throw myself unto the mercy of the council, and I won't make that mistake again. The concept was not to deceive, but for, actually in essence, to show respect. However, the gentleman that was just speaking, Mr. Nash, I respect the fact that he brought that publicly, and I appreciate him and his comments. Also, on Cole Avenue, there are barriers right across the street from the high school field.
For years.
It's been there for three years, and I think that that needs to be addressed. I believe that that would be under the DPW, and I think that that is an area that would be a feather in our cap if we were able to finally resolve that this year.
If I could, through you, Mr. Chairman. The Chairman himself had asked me this question, and to be honest, I forget the date, but I did ask Heather a question, I believe, it's supposed to be this fall, it's a bridge work that they have to do. It's a project that they had to wait for the engineering, they finished the engineering designs, so it's already scheduled to be done, and I'm pretty sure it's this fall, Wally. Get you the more exact timing tomorrow, if you want to give me a call, but that, it is on the schedule, it's coming soon, I think it's this fall, if I recall the conversation.
If I may state, there is a dangerous situation there, not only with the plating, but with cars being forced to veer out, and other people coming in, and we have high school children coming out of that field. So it's a dangerous situation that really does need to be addressed as soon as possible.
Yep. It's already on the path.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Vecia.
I have one question. Maybe the Town Manager can answer this, maybe Mr. Dede can answer this. We don't have a school committee anymore.
Correct.
Okay?
Yes, we do.
Well, in theory, we have, but it just has no power.
Well, they have no power, but here's the point. They tried to elect officers last week, and the vote was three of three, and now they're going to appoint somebody else with the council, and then they're going to vote in offices. Why are they voting in offices if they don't have any power?
They're still a body.
Because the, under the town charter, there's still a government body, and they still follow the rules of the charter. The state has essentially come in and stripped them of their powers, but in effect, the state plan is that if they, when they finish their receivership, which they're hoping is within three years or less, they will ultimately transfer the power back to the school committee, and they'll have full power to run the schools again. So, under the state law, they want them to act, the school committee, this receivership, Jessica still comes and informs them of what's going on in the schools, trying to keep them up to date, trying to train them, trying to bring them, so that when the receivership ends, they'll come back into full power.
Thank you, but he wants to say something.
Through the Chair, again, the Manager summed it up quite well, what we're looking to do, what Jessica is looking to continue, is the dialogue with the committee to keep them informed of all that we're about, and to be transparent, to keep the dialogue open, as we go forward with this challenging but meaningful agenda for the kids.
Okay, so, thank you very much, I understand.
Also, Counselor, Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just have one question tonight, too. I know that we, there's been murmurings around, and I know that a few different citizens have asked for it, but is there any progress on making the meeting minutes, like, available on the town website for the town council meetings?
Is there progress in the, okay, the answer is, I really don't know if there's any progress, because I really haven't talked about it with anybody to date, so this is kind of the first comment I've heard about putting it on. And I know that a lot of departments do, well, not a lot, probably half the departments put on minutes, other ones don't. If you would like them and they're not on yet, we can have Yvonne just add them to the website. I don't think it's a big deal, so I don't know why it would be that difficult.
Yeah, that would be, that would be perfect. I mean, I know that we've talked about, you know, the annual report and everything, but I think that the meeting minutes are a good place to start.
Yeah, I'd be happy, frankly, I kind of assumed they might be there already, but I guess I haven't looked for them, so.
I don't believe that they are.
If they're not, we'll start posting them. We should post them, and all the different committees should post them, so it should be everybody that puts them up so the public can see them, so.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. As a matter of fact, I think in some instances, the Town Clerk's Office, Maddie, gets all the minutes, and her office actually puts some up on the website, so I'll have to check with Yvonne tomorrow and see what she's doing.
Okay, great, appreciate it, thank you.
I will also follow up and make sure, because I am in agreement that all public meetings should, and minutes should be posted in a timely fashion.
And it's been discussed with department heads, so all department heads have been asked to do it, so I'll have to recheck and see how it's going.
Okay.
All set, Counselor O'Clair?
I'm all set, thank you.
Counselor Estrada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm coming tonight, pleasure.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First of all, I'd like to remind the citizens of Southbridge, on the walk for support, that's going to be Wednesday night at 6:00 p.m., we're going to meet here at the Town Hall. We'll walk down to the Town Common, and there we'll hear from some of our community leaders, state legislatures. If you do plan on attending, a citizen had requested this from me, that I put it out there, that you wear blue and black to show your support. If you can't, that's not a big deal, but I hope to see you there. This is pretty important, that we show the support for our law enforcement. Also, a question to you, Mr. Town Manager. Somebody had asked me about the sidewalks on Newell Street, Newell Ave, I should say. When are those going to be done?
Well, that's, this is, you know, this is a tough one, and I want to explain to the council, and I think the council already knows, so we're not going to kid ourselves here tonight. We get about $800,000 of Chapter 90 money a year. I've had, I actually had this particular conversation with this current chairman and the chairman before him, about how that money is spent, because they asked me when I first came here, is how come we're not paving roads? And I said to, well, that's a good question, how come we're not paving roads? So I met with Heather, we had a long discussion about this, and she takes that $800,000, and she spreads it about throughout all the different town roads to make them last longer. Because if she spent the $800,000 to pave roads, she might pave a road and a half. So instead, what she does is she spreads out all this money to all the different roads, and she fixes potholes, and she fixes roads, and she does repairs, and that makes every road last a little bit longer. The answer is, we're not going to be able to fix the roads or the sidewalks until we find a dedicated source of money for that. And right now, 800 grand doesn't do anything for the state. So either the state, the federal, are going to have to give us more money, or the town at some point is going to have to decide to put an appropriation towards roads out of local tax dollars. So, the answer is, they're doing the best they can with the little money we have, it's not even remotely close enough to fix roads, never mind sidewalks. So, the answer to your question is, sidewalk will probably never get fixed until there's some money to fix it, and I don't know when that would be.
Okay, no, I really appreciate your honesty, and that I was under the impression, when I was asked this, that the citizens of that street had received a letter. I have yet to see the letter, but I told them, the person that I would ask up here to see. So, it just gave me the impression. Now, I hadn't heard anything about Newell Ave, but I do know about the Chapter 90 money, and, you know, there's not enough money for anybody to fix the infrastructure within the state or any state. I don't think anybody's prepared for it. And, yeah, and just, you know, the walk for support, again, again, we're going to meet here Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, we'll walk from here, and we're going to go down to the Town Common. I really hope you can come out and join us and show your support for our law enforcement. And that's it, stay cool, everyone, and hydrated, thanks.
Thank you.
If I could, just one more comment, if I could, because your question was a really good question, and people don't understand the answer to the question, so I'm glad that we had that, just a little exchange. But, I wanted to relay a quick story. The head of Russell Harrington called me to talk about, I think it's called River Street or River Ave, or River Street, and asked me, you know, the road's really, really bad, when are you going to fix my road? And he says, you know, our company pays a lot of taxes in town. And I got to tell you, it was painful having that conversation with him, because I couldn't give him a good answer. We actually have a road plan. We have, the town went out and got this pavement plan for doing roads. So the plan's there, the problem is there's no money to fund the plan. So it's frustrating with me, because, you know, a lot of citizens ask me that same question, and to have a major manufacturer in town, who's a great company for our town, ask me, and not be able to give that owner a logical, reasonable, I guess I gave him a reasonable answer, but it was not an answer that makes anyone happy. So, to that end, sometime in the fall, I'm going to have Heather come in and talk more about this, so that there's a complete understanding. As much, I've got to say, it's not even for your purposes, as much as it is for the public to understand this issue, because it's frustrating to everybody in town that drives on these roads. So, in the fall, I may take an hour and have Heather explain it all, and kind of give you a better explanation of how that $800,000 is spent and how we're trying to move forward, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, it's a really good question.
Well, no, I appreciate that, and I'm just going to follow up with the constituent that spoke with me in regards to that, just to see if they have any information to, any more information to offer me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I just want to go back to Counselor O'Clair in regards to meeting minutes. I just went on the town website, and the, all town council meeting minutes up to June 6 are on the website, so.
Subcommittee minutes.
Thank you.
So. Clear for that one, anyway.
Subcommittee minutes, I have not looked that far, I'm just looking at town council meeting minutes, and I know that ComCon, Con?
ConCon.
Conservation Committee, also has all their minutes up, right, as of right now.
I know, unless it's changed in like, since this person had brought it up to me, which might have been a little bit ago, Board of Health meeting minutes aren't on there?
We, I can search further, but again, I just wanted to say that town council meeting minutes are up to date, so we still have some work to do, and I think we will, I will follow up and make sure that those minutes continue to be going up there.
Absolutely, I appreciate that, especially, I mean, the same people who are upset, you know, that there's no cameras in these subcommittee meetings, at least they could have something to go and reference and see, you know, what's going on in our town. And, I mean, even us as well, if I miss a Board of Health meeting, like, there's no way for me unless I call somebody to find out what happened in it, or come to the Town Hall.
Correct, thank you. Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's absolutely tremendous, the gentleman, I didn't get his name, the one president that showed up for Citizens Forum this evening.
Rick Nash.
Rick Nash, I appreciate his appearance this evening. He was 100% on our making a mistake with having a secret vote. I was against it, and I think we should all be against it. Everything should be all right in front, with all of us, and I would encourage, please, anybody in town, any consideration, I'd love to see these seats full, I really would. Come and give us a hard time, come and give us your problems, your questions, your concerns. So do in the coffee shop, here's the place to do it.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things. One, I actually wanted to follow up on what, what the conversation regarding roads was, is that I wanted to say, I wanted to commend the DPW for doing the patching and roadlight painting that they've been doing lately.
I can't hear you.
I wanted to commend the DPW for doing the patching and roadline painting that they have been doing lately, although I noticed that there's a lot of roads where the roads themselves, there's no center lines on, on a whole ton of our roads, and I think it would be a safety issue to make sure we get at least one line down the center of most of these roads. There's a lot of them, a lot of miles. But also, I came across reference, and I think I sent it to everybody, was that the state legislature, I think it's looking at making the possibility of a local option tax to fund road building, and.
Yeah, it's going down, it's not going to pass.
It probably will, unfortunately, it's also buried in, like, it's also buried in like a forty-five page bill, so.
Just a second, the problem with that bill is that if you happen to be a town right off a highway exit, you tend to get a ton of revenue for that town, it'd be a smaller than ours town, if you're a town nowhere's near a highway, don't have any gas stations or anything, you get no money, so it's a difficult kind of deal, there's a lot of winners and losers in that, it's not a real fair distribution, but I'm told it's going down in big flames, is what I'm told, just so you know.
Yeah.
Anything that would give us money would be good, but I don't think that's going to fly through the legislature.
Might not. Also, I wanted to kind of change gears here for a second, is that I was sitting in on the Conservation Commission last week, and the Conservation, the conversation turned a little bit toward noting that people, some of the people in our community, for obvious economic reasons unfortunately, are fishing, and actually probably eating, taking the fish home and eating it, and unfortunately, there's advisories from the state that we really shouldn't be eating any of the fish in our, in our rivers, in this area, primarily because of mercury, and the DEP is urging minimizing eating, and especially avoiding it for kids, pregnant women, those who intend to become pregnant, nursing mothers, they shouldn't be eating any fish from the, specifically from the Quinnipiac River or its tributaries, others should limit consumption of all fish to two meals a month, and it's kind of a catch twenty-two, we, I can understand why people would need to, obviously people need to eat, and fish is a great protein source, but it might not be the best thing to be eating. So I just thought I'd mention that, it came up, and I know that the ConCon is, would like to do something about putting up signs along the river to see if that could happen, I know, I intended to, I wanted to actually, I meant, I meant to email Andy about it, and honestly, haven't had the chance to do it today, so, because I think it's kind of in his purview more than anything else. Also, I think you kind of branched this in, you made an allusion to this, the drought watch last, at the last meeting, I just wanted to kind of reinforce that, because Worcester County and Northeastern Massachusetts are especially under drought watch, and it's because we've got so much, we're about five inches below normal for April to June, and ten inches for the last twelve months, so we need to really seriously look at how to figure out to cut down water use, stop wasting the waters, that, that, I mean, it's amazing that we're in a drought, and yet I see people washing their, washing their driveways. That doesn't seem like a smart thing to be doing, frankly. But anyway, so, just, do we, I would like to really think about doing something about creating, setting up maybe a bylaw for a water ban, most towns have them, that we can invoke when we need to. Do we have one?
No, we do not have a water ban in place, and I think that will definitely come from the recommendation of the, of our water and sewer department, if, if, if we ever needed to go that way. I know a lot of the local, other local communities do, but at, at this point, we are not in that category where we, we have plenty of water as of right now.
Well, I know, I mean, our, our reservoirs are at ninety percent capacity, and that's great, but I just think, I would like to see us start looking at this issue before it becomes an issue, because we want to make sure we have water for food, and for drinking, and for, you know, obviously for firefighting and those kinds of things, and.
And, and I, and I think they are, and I, and I think that's why we received the notification last week, that they are monitoring that, and I, and our town manager did read a notice.
Yes.
So they are being very proactive, I think, I, I, again, I think we, those are hired professionals, I think we let them do what they do best, and if it comes to the place where they need to ask us to put a water ban, I think we will, but I think they're doing a fairly good job right now, kind of monitoring and giving heads up, so that's why we are getting the notification, so they are being proactive, so, I just, I, I don't, it's just me, I mean, I'm only one out of nine, but I don't think it's our place right now to try to set a ban, or even come up with a bylaw to kind of do that, I think, let's let the professionals do it, it's up to this council, but that's just my personal opinion.
I'm not sure you need a ban, I'm not sure you need a ban, I think they can do without it, I might have to ask Heather, but I think they can do without it, it's under state law, they're allowed to do it if they want to, if they want a work company to do it, but I'll check.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Councilor Steves, Councilor Clements?
Thank you. In regard to the meeting minutes, a few years ago, we spent a lot of money revamping our website, getting in technology, and the ability to the various departments to upload and download information, take off obsolete information, I'm not so sure how well that's being maintained, but as far as the minutes, each department was supposed to, like the Board of Health, there was access points so that they could go, and we can't do it, but the departments could. Now, the town clerk's office, of course, when we would have our meetings, we had a recording secretary forever, until a year or so ago, when the budget, we decided to cancel the recording clerks, and generally, and take our own meeting minutes, which I think most of us, all of us have pretty much done the best job we can do in the position that we've been put in, and we get the minutes in. I think the disconnect perhaps with subcommittees is, once we've submitted them to the town hall, to, for instance, the manager's office, which is, I think, where most of us submit our minutes, or all of us, there's probably a disconnect as to now who's responsible for putting those up on the website, besides the council meetings, minutes themselves. So, I would suggest that the town manager would, he's going to look into that, obviously, whether it is still the town clerk's office, as long as the manager's office gives, or whether he wants to, you know, appoint somebody in the manager's office themselves who are going to upload those onto the website. But certainly, I know that we hand them in, and they can then be filed onto the website properly. But we did spend a lot of time making sure that our minutes were on, and that we had the right technology, and there was a time only one person, like, could, had the ability to do that. Now, it's my understanding, what we paid for was that all the departments were supposed to be able to go in and do that. So if that's the case, it's just a matter of housekeeping to get that done, so, that's my stand on the minutes. And I just wanted to say thank you, thank you out there, I had the opportunity to attend last Thursday the skate park demonstrations that were done at Capillo Park, some of you may be aware, some of you not, you should take a drive-by if you aren't. A lot of renovations have been done to the skate park area for our, our youth, and our adults who are into skate, skateboarding, rollerblading, biking, all kinds of wonderful things you can do on the ramps there, as demonstrated to us by some professionals that came in, and I just want to thank the volunteers who've been spearheading this, the rec department was there with the youth program that runs daily, they brought their students in, children in, and the cops and kids program brought all of their kids in, under, with our deputy chief, Jose Dini, and it was a really great opportunity to get the demonstrations, learn some bike safety, as presented by our rec director, and, and just see what the town had to offer the youth, and the involvement that's going on, so, kudos to all that made that happen, it was a beautiful hot sunny day, they made sure the kids were well hydrated, had a water, they served their lunches, from the Project Bread program were brought and served right there for the kids, so it was a great effort, and I commend all those who were involved with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to Agenda Item number eleven, I forgot to, a couple things. Number one, I want to acknowledge, and also publicly, let the public know that there was a passing of a citizen that was very involved, and was in my tenure as the chair and vice chair, was always proactive in our community, and that's Mr. Linus Baset. May he rest in peace, so I would like to, Mr. Linus Baset from Smiley's Taxi passed away, so I would like to hold a brief moment of silence for him. Thank you. And another thing, this past week, our community has been hit once again with what we need to continue to fight, this drugs, this, this past week, I lost, I say I, because I coached this young man at the age of fourteen, and on Thursday night, he passed away due to a drug overdose at the age of twenty years old, one of our young kids in town. And one of the things that I want to urge the public, I've, this is kind of hit home for me, and one of the things that I, I have purposed in my heart is, I'm going to walk the streets a little bit more, and if I see it, I'm going to dismiss, I'm going to make sure they're gone. They're not invited in Southbridge. Drug dealers are not invited in Southbridge, and those that want to purchase drugs, I'm sorry, but you're not invited in Southbridge. We're losing people daily, we're losing young people, we're losing family, friends, and, and we need to, as a community, I know we have a committee that's in place, I know that the police department has started a new program, but reality is, it's going to take the community. If you see something, report it, call. Don't, don't just say, okay, that's normal behavior in this area, no, we need to report it. We, we need to be very vocal, and let people know, this is our community, and we need to take back our streets, we need to take back our community. I don't want to have to go to another young person's funeral because of the drugs that are being sold in our streets. These drugs are contaminated, they're mixed with all types of things, and we need to continue to be vigilant and be vocal. So I urge the public, if you see it, report it. If you see suspicious activities, suspicious vehicles, cars going in and out, it doesn't matter what time of night, call, call our police department, they are doing the best they can, they are currently understaffed right now, with some of the retirees that they, that have gone by, and, but they are, continue to work hard, so call, make a phone call, don't ignore it, because if you ignore it, you don't know what the next phone call you're going to get. It could be a family member, it could be a friend that struggles, so let's, let's continue to be vigilant, let's work together as a community, so we don't continue to lose young people, or we don't lose anybody because of this epidemic. But again, I just, I, I want to urge the public and urge the council, we are elected officials, people know that we hold this position, so let's, let's continue to make ourselves accessible to the public, walk the streets, let people know, you know, this kind of stuff is not welcome in our community, and we need to continue to just send that message. I understand that some people have, it's, it's a mental health issue also, but at the same time, we have to, as a community, take a proactive approach, we have to be the, the community crime dogs, we have to be the community crime watch, the police department cannot do it alone, it's going to take all of us. So if you see suspicious activity, cars coming in from out of town, report it, write down the license plate, write down a description, write down what they look like, what they're carrying, if they're carrying backpacks, if they're, where they are, the locations, because we have to tackle this as a community. We can't just say, yeah, we have a police department, they're getting paid to do it, no, we need to help, we need to report it, we see it, call. And that's all I wanted to say. Moving on to Agenda Item number eleven.
Next meeting date will be Monday, August eighth, at seven P.M. here in council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda Item number twelve, Vote to Enter Into Executive Session According to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Thirty, A, Section Eighteen to Twenty-Five, to Discuss Strategy With Respect to Litigation and to Adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor DePietro?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor McKenzie?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you, good night.